All right, good evening everyone and welcome to and welcome to anyone new to a school board meeting. It's so good to see so many people tonight. Hasn't been like this for so many months, so it's good to see everyone. The regular business meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:01 PM. This regular business meeting of the ASIO School Board is being conducted in person. This meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you, this evening, to my left, from my left to your right, is Director Tamara Grady, Director Thomas Brooks, Director Jackie Muscata-Jones, myself, Councilor Dawson Walton, Director Tanya Simons, Director Heather Douglas, Superintendent Corey McIntyre, and General Counsel Tim Palmetier are also present in the boardroom. The superintendent's cabinet and other district administrators are seated in another conference room with a live stream of this meeting being shown on a monitor. Individuals will come into the boardroom as needed. Those who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Douglas, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Board members, in front of you is the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? I'd like to make a motion to remove an item from the agenda. Okay. What is item?
I'm move to remove action item policy 508, gender inclusion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? And we're only discussing whether or not we're adding the, or removing the agenda item eight, five, eight A, sorry. Any discussion?
Yes, I have, are we left, right, or just anybody? All right, yes, I think that this, so this policy was first introduced on March 23rd. At that time, Policy Committee members expressed the desire and need to make this a transparent policy process with input from community stakeholders. There was discussion of really having a listening session, of making it very public, of having wide participation in such a broad sweeping policy decision. One that will affect every single student, staff member, volunteer, in all district systems as outlined in the policy. On May 27th in the Policy Committee, the decision was changed. It was determined not to seek broad community input, but rather to continue forward. The policy was then introduced on June 22nd, right before the 4th of July, and that was the first time there was broad public knowledge about this policy. Over the course of less than one month, there's been a lot of different community input, community input that's worthy of discussion by the Policy Committee, which did not meet again since receiving that discussion, worthy of board attention and worthy of greater transparency and broad community input. For that reason, I think it's important that we consider postponing this action item to the time in which the board can further discuss it fully transparently and with broad community input and careful consideration.
I also have comment. I, when looking at policy 208, which is the Development, Adoption, Implementation of Policies, this is an existing school board policy which has been ignored through this process. The policy specifically states that while reserving unto itself the responsibility and authority to determine district policy, the school board is earnest in its desire to seek out the judgment and counsel of citizens, students, and staff members in the development of policies before a final adoption. At no such time has this occurred. There has been no opportunity for public input. This policy has not been met. Therefore, this policy that is presented here today, 508, should not proceed today until such a time that we can have vast community input. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Is there, is there any discussion to change the, any other items or discussion to remove item 8A from the agenda? All in favor to remove item 8A from the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Director Grady, seconded by Director Thomas, to accept the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes for two. The next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the school board. We have a number of speaker cards, so we will allow extra time. So, I will call the names of individuals. During audience participation to address the school board, I will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card. We ask that speakers keep their comments to three minutes. The board does not take action or discuss matters during this portion of the meeting. Speakers may be referred to the superintendent or staff if follow-up is necessary. The complete guidelines for public participation are provided on the meeting materials table and on the school board section of the district website. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name, your topic, and also state whether or not you are a district resident. So, first up, we have Maddie.
So, I'm a district resident and student. Is that the info you needed?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Hi, everyone, I'm Madeline Novak, and next year I will be a sophomore at Maple Grove Senior High. I am speaking to you as a member of the LGBTQ+ community. I realized that I was bisexual around the time I was in fifth grade. I love the idea of one day being in a relationship with a woman that I could proudly hold hands with and bring to family dinners. There's nothing wrong with identifying as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender, so why did I feel the urge to hide who I was? My parents are both loving and accepting people who will always support me in the LGBTQ+ community. Why was I feeling so anxious to speak up about my sexual and romantic orientation? The district still doesn't talk about anything LGBT at all. There's no Family Life Course talking about how to discuss healthy relationships between two men or two women, no gender-neutral bathrooms, and definitely no LGBT history being taught. I knew so little about such a huge part of my identity. Teachers want to ensure their students a solid education and have them be comfortable inside and outside of the classroom. In order for students to actually be comfortable, you have to understand what makes them feel like themselves. It's not hard to tell your class about how a student uses she/her pronouns in a new name. There's no excuse for why you can't go through with someone's proper pronouns and name. It's easy to learn and go through with. I know this because I've had to do this several times for both my family and friends. My older sibling identifies as a non-binary and uses they/them pronouns. Some of my closest friends have recently come out about how they identify as female to male or female to non-binary. When my sibling came out and told us, we respected their new name and pronouns. By doing this, they feel much more comfortable and honest with our family and friends. You'd want your child to be true to themselves, and you'd want them to be happy. By being an ally and being supportive, you're allowing them to express themselves the way that they are. In order to achieve greatness and follow our dreams, we need to feel safe and feel heard so we can bloom to success. It takes a lot of different people for this to happen, but many students, students like me, really need this policy in place to help us thrive both in and out of school. Being LGBT is not bad. It's not anything you can fix because there's nothing broken in the first place. Following through with implementing this policy is a good first step to promote the acceptance and validity of all students. Thank you.
Maemon, thank you. Maemon Quigley?
Just needed my name and the female resident?
Yep. Hello, everyone. Good evening, my name's Maemon Quigley, and I am a parent and resident. My pronouns are she/her. Again, I'm a proud parent of three students in the district. I'm also an alum of ASIO, so those of you who know me know that I'm very proud of that. So, I just am here to say that I really do fully support the gender inclusion policy. I'm a public health professional and a researcher, and I support this policy as I want to ensure the school's district staff and systems are inclusive for students accessing programming facilities, including safe spaces for young people. The 2019 Minnesota Student Survey data shows that transgender, genderqueer, and gender nonconforming, non-binary students are bullied more than twice as much as their cisgender counterparts. Transgender, genderqueer, and non-binary students are bullied for their sexual identity, whether they are actual or perceived, six times as much as their cisgender counterparts. LGBTQ students are bullied for their sexual identity, whether actual or perceived, twice as much as their cisgender counterparts. Young people who identify as LGBTQ continue to experience inequitable health outcomes and social outcomes compared to their cisgender counterparts. Although nearly all schools prohibit harassment based on students' perceived or actual sexual orientation or gender identity, policy alone, so policy alone, is not enough to eradicate LGBTQ health disparities. Therefore, additional programming is needed to support and affirm and protect LGBTQ youth, and this is evident in research. This is critical because sexual and gender-based harassment contributes substantially to LGBTQ-related health disparities. Discrimination on race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and gender identity has been linked to many negative physiological and physical health outcomes in previous research, including increased suicidal ideation, and I'll say that again, increased suicidal ideation, higher sex, or increased suicidal ideation. And research shows that higher levels of social support were associated with positive self-esteem. Higher levels of social support were associated with positive self-esteem, lack of social support, or low social, low social support.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Was associated with high levels. I want to ensure that the board moves forward and votes on this policy because I want to ensure that this board wants to continue to inspire and prepare all students with confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning, which is the mission of the district. Thank you.
Can I just ask, like, we can't see the speaker.
Oh, Kristy, she's asking about the flag, I think.
Thank you, good evening, board members. My name is Katie, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a district employee. My name is Katie Ziba. I'm here today as a member of the community and alumnus of District 279, and most importantly, an educator in the district. Really quickly, Maddie, I'm happy to let you know that we will be teaching an LGBTQ Studies course at both Maple Grove Senior and ASIO Senior this year, which I will be teaching. I have been in education for over 10 years, and I'm thrilled to be back in my home district to serve the community that I love. This district truly formed a lot of who I am as an educator, a deep value of diversity, inclusion, a commitment to serving all members of the community, and pride in who we are. I am here to express urgent support in passing the gender inclusion policy. There have been many concerns voiced about this policy, some of which fall under the guise of protecting teachers, and so I'd like to address some of these through my lens as an educator who has served upwards of 6,000 students over my career. I'm going to begin with the concern that when students proclaim pronouns, teacher will be put under pressure and fear of accidentally misgendering or misusing pronouns and how it becomes too much to remember for teachers. Allow me to tell you some of the things we remember about our students. We remember that Christina M. goes by Tina, and Christina A. goes by Chris. We remember that Brandon plays the viola, not the violin. Sierra babysits after school so she can save money for a trip to Greece. Ethan has a baseball game on Tuesday, he's nervous about it because his dad deploys to Japan in three weeks, and he wants to play his best. We remember when Ramadan begins so we can invite Hassan to stay in the classroom during lunch, and that Grace's grandmother's in the hospital, which is why she's been quiet this week. We remember that it's easier to get ahold of a gauze father through text than through a phone call. We know who has peanut allergies and who has asthma. We know that Jade uses they/them pronouns and loves Dungeons and Dragons. We remember the students who have IEPs, who need notes printed before class, and the others who need readings read aloud for them, those who use fidgets, those who need to sit near us for additional check-ins. We remember all these details because they are valuable and important to who our students are, to their individual identities. Therefore, it's important and valuable to us as their teachers. These are not just more details to keep track of, they are precious pieces of their lives that give us a glimpse into who they are outside of our classroom walls. All students deserve a structured environment where they can feel safe to ask questions, express themselves, and share aspects of their identities. Remembering pronouns is truly as simple as remembering that I go by Katie instead of Catherine. It has also been stated that this may take valuable classroom time away from learning. Having conversations with my students about who they are, what makes them special, how they see themselves in this world, and how we can better listen and respect each other is exactly how I want to spend my time in the classroom. You have the power, so I ask you, as elected members of the school board, to affirm our students, provide them that brave space to become the best version of themselves. We'll provide the guidance, the community, and the support. We'll remember their names and pronouns. All you have to do is vote yes.
Time.
As a Maple Grove resident for 28 years, I'm appalled by what I read in policy 508. For multiple generations, women have fought a tough fight for equality, and as it looks in this policy, the undermining of that equality fight has truly started. If you vote for this policy to be integrated into our schools, it deteriorates not only the generations of women's efforts to fight for equality rights, also for children's rights. Those of you who are women on the board only have this opportunity because of the generations of women fighting for equal rights. Please don't destroy what others have sacrificed so greatly for through so many decades. Let's pass on the rights to our children and our grandchildren. As a parent of five, I love my children, support them. I would never willingly put an adult responsibility and the consequences of an adult decision into the hands and the minds of a child. In this policy, you're asking children whose brains aren't fully capable of making complete rational decisions until they're in their twenties. You're asking them to make a lifelong decision that has lifelong consequences. Our youth are being raised in the most difficult of times, and to add the weight of life decision like this will certainly add to more teen suicide in Minnesota, which is one of the leading causes of death in our teens. What about the girl who loses her spot on the team, and the boy then is not able to develop, or to a boy who then able not to develop her skillset to get a college scholarship? Look at what you're proposing to our future and the damage that you will be responsible for. I'm asking you to do the right thing by voting no to policy 508. Who is going to be liable for the boy who exposes himself in the girl's restroom, or the locker room, or even worse, a molestation or rape? Even if the boy chooses to identify as a girl, he still has male hormones and temptations. Who is going to be, or excuse me, how many more full-time employees will you need to hire to have bathroom monitors in the locker room, in the bathrooms, in every school throughout the entire district? Your number-one job is to make sure our children are safe. What's the future cost of what you're proposing? Without a full-time monitor, you're easily targeting hundreds of lawsuits for these molestations that may occur. What about the girl who goes into the boy's restroom and falsely accuses a boy of molestation? That boy's life forever will be negatively impacted, and he may never
Thirty seconds remaining.
He may never recover from this. As a taxpayer supporting the school district financially, I will never vote for an increase again. I will make sure that hundreds of friends, hundreds of clients, my neighbors, people I go to church with, everybody will know about this policy and what you're proposing. This should be something that the public should decide, not the six. Please reconsider the support of policy 508. Vote no to stand for children's safety and the right to the children without putting a burden of adult decision on them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly Jansen?
Hello, I'm here today to express my First Amendment rights of freedom of speech and the right to redress my government for my grievances. I'm not happy with the way the school board is abusing taxpayer dollars by considering a dangerous gender inclusion policy without notifying the public properly. This policy is dangerous because it would put people born as males with penises in the locker rooms and dressing rooms with young teenage girls who are already mortified to have to change in front of other people. I know I was when I was a teenager, that's the most awkward time of your entire life. Now you want to put them in with people of the opposite sex? This is dangerous and unsafe, and you're opening yourselves to lawsuits down the road. You need to think longer term than you have been. God forbid someone's daughter or granddaddy gets raped or sexually molested while at school in the locker room because you thought you should be nice to everybody instead of being smart and keeping girls safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess Stewart?
We're discussing the policy, why don't you leave?
Okay, we're gonna, Jess?
Good evening, Chair Dawson Walton, Board Member, Superintendent McIntyre. My name is Jess Stewart, I've been an educator in the district for over 20 years. I am also a member of the community group Anti-Racist for a Better 279, and I am a proud finalist for the 2021 Minnesota Teacher of the Year. I'm speaking tonight in support of the gender inclusion policy. Next year, for the first time, we will offer LGBTQ studies as an elective social studies course. This class was created because for years scholars have requested that we create space that centers LGBTQ history in space where many of our scholars would feel visible. This elective is open to all scholars, and I'm proud to say that between Maple Grove Senior High and ASIO Senior High, over 100 scholars have enrolled in that course. At the last board meeting, some board members expressed that protection for LGBTQ scholars and staff already exists under current policies. Perhaps one could make the same argument for policy 101, racial equity and educational achievement, that that policy is an umbrella, a catch-all for everything equity-related. Yet, the board recognized the need for the resolution on George Floyd and systemic racism. Language matters, specificity in policy is needed. The 15th Amendment was needed because African-Americans were not included in "we the people." The 19th Amendment was added because women were not included in "we the people." The Indian Citizenship Act was passed because indigenous people were not included in "we the people." Court cases were needed because LGBTQ people were not included in "we the people." These are just a few of many reasons why the gender inclusion policy is necessary. As LGBTQ folks and non-binary and gender nonconforming individuals, we are part of this beautifully rich and diverse fabric of District 279. We are scholars, we are teachers, we are ESPs, we are custodians, we are bus drivers and kitchen staff, we are principals, we are system leadership and school board members. Our existence and humanity deserve to be seen and validated. This gender inclusion policy does that. Our white, cis-het scholars have been centered for hundreds of years. They will continue to be centered. When a minoritized group gains access to equity, other groups don't lose out. As the saying goes, equity is not a pie. I am proud to work in a district that understands the distinction between equality and equity and continues to push for equitable practices for our most minoritized communities. Thank you.
Okay, so, before, before we get going, keep going, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're respectful of each other's behavior, that we're not going to call anyone out, because we are extending this comment period longer than we usually do because we know it's really important to hear from people. So, if there are, you know, I'll, first, we will ask people to leave, okay? All right, Pastor Caitlin Forster, sorry.
Hello, I am Pastor Caitlin Forster. I am a pastor in, at Lord of Life Lutheran Church in the district here, but I do not live in the district. So, I am Pastor Caitlin Forster, my pronouns are she/her, and I am at Lord of Life at the intersection of County Roads 101 and 10. I've been serving there for three years as the pastor for community life and have been ordained as a pastor in the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America for nearly seven years. At Lord of Life, our community is defined as a group of people called together by God's Holy Spirit who confess Jesus Christ as Lord. Our church doors are open wide to all people, and we strive to educate, comfort, support, and share love in Christ's name. At the close of each of our worship services, we leave gatherings with the reminder that we are children of God, loved beyond measure, and sent to serve the world. So, today, I'm living out my calling as a pastor in this community and as a child of God to speak in support of the policy, the policy 508, the gender inclusion policy that has been brought forth. I support this policy because it offers clear statements, guidelines, and support for each student regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, or gender nonconformity. Part of my call, part of my call as a pastor, I think about the, in the stories of creation. I believe that God has created the heavens and the earth and everything in it, and when God got to the part of creating humanity, God blessed us and called us good. This is the first blessing that is uttered into existence in the scriptures, and that created in God's image, we are blessed to tend the earth, each, to tend to the earth, tend to each other, and to care for it out of the abundance of love that we have received. And who God is is not limited to a gender. The images of God that show up throughout the scriptures are often metaphors. God is compassionate like a father, strong like a mother. God is near to us as the clothing we wear and in the air that we breathe. Getting to God being love, intimate and relational, and who we are as created in this image is lived out when we remember that we are interconnected, that we are part of a community together. And part of living out that call includes creating policies and procedures that help our children learn and grow. So, like the church, schools need to be safe places where students can learn who they are and what makes them come alive, asking questions that shape the future, not just for themselves, but for the community around them. School is where they start to think about if they want to be scientists, who influences them, and if they want to play soccer. And if we support these areas of identity, then we need to listen to and support all aspects of identity. For any child
Thirty seconds remaining.
For any child, these years of development can be difficult. Middle school especially is a difficult time of life. I don't know many people who went through middle school with great fondness, and a huge thank you to any middle school teachers out there. And for children who are wrestling with questions about their gender, that difficulty becomes so much harder because the support is not as ingrained in the system for them. So, please invest resources to offer these kids the support that they need and deserve. Please tell them that they are not alone in their struggles, that they have adults who will listen and advocate for them, and make this community stronger by remembering that we are all created as good, beloved, worthy. Thank you.
Kristy Hall?
Good evening, thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak. I'm Kristy Hall, I am not a district resident, I am an attorney with the legal advocacy organization Gender Justice, a Minnesota nonprofit, and I've represented multiple transgender students. I've received calls from all over the state from parents and kids who are struggling with school policies that are inhospitable to transgender and LGBT students in their districts. And I want to encourage the board to pass this policy. It is critical to have a policy in place before it is needed so that the rules are clear and everybody knows how it works, and when students need assistance, they can get it immediately without having to go through lengthy back-and-forths with school board members. I have, within the past year, resolved cases with school districts in the state on behalf of my transgender clients, and those school districts paid out over half a million dollars for discriminating against transgender students. And the half a million dollars doesn't begin to compensate those students for the harm that they went through and for the harm that their families went through when their school districts did not let them use the appropriate bathrooms, locker rooms, and play on the appropriate sports teams. The Minnesota Court of Appeals issued, in a case where I represented one of these students, issued an order last September that was crystal clear and is precedential for the entire state, and it says that if you discriminate against transgender students by not permitting them to use the bathrooms and locker rooms that align with their gender identity, you are violating the Minnesota Human Rights Act and the Minnesota Constitution. So, I'm very gratified and pleased that the school board is considering this policy. It is not only the right thing to do, it is a responsible use of taxpayer dollars, and thank you very much.
Reverend Darren Mell?
Board, my name is Darren Mell, and I'm a resident and a parent of two children here. And I just want to encourage you all that you are hereby voter of the people, and you are representing the people. And as Heather and Tanya had mentioned, that this has not been brought to the people for discussion and for input. And I only found out about this at the last meeting from someone who was here and told me about it. I am a licensed minister in the Gospel of Jesus Christ, and I'm also a former homosexual. I was told that in school, I was bullied and told that I was gay, and teased and abused in the locker room. And that identity and that bullying ended up creating a gay identity in me, and I lived as a gay man for 10 years. And it was through faith in Jesus Christ that I realized that our Creator, as pastors shared, that He created us male and female, and He called it good. And He created an order that men and women would be married to procreate and to carry on the glory of His creation. And that was something that was going to be stolen from me by an enemy of my soul, which I would call Satan, and he wanted to kill, steal, and destroy me. But by the grace of Jesus Christ, He redeemed me, and He saved me from my sin. In fact, the Scriptures say that all people have fallen short of glory, and not all people are good. The pastor was incorrect. She is not preaching the Gospel of Jesus Christ. We all need to repent of our sins, and that's what I did. I also had to forgive those people who hurt me and who abused me. And now I've been married for 15 years, and Jesus Christ has changed my desires. And if you want to hold the courage, have the confidence and courage for people to identify as themselves as God created them, this policy will be teaching them that they are disembodied, that their spirits are less than their body. God gave us a body for a reason and gave us a sex for-
Okay, please, respect the speaker. Okay, everybody-
And God gave us a body-
Sorry, I'm sorry, can you do this? Okay, if everybody can really respect our speakers, you know, I mean, okay, all right, we're gonna let him finish.
God gave us sex bodies for a reason, for His glory, and He has a perfect plan for us, to prosper us and not to harm us. And when the school, if they implement this kind of policy, it's going to require a place of physical business, such as locker rooms and bathrooms, where we have our privacy and we honor the body, this will be something where a belief that our bodies are just second-rate to our ideas, well, that's not, that's not how I'm raising my children. And my, even, even the Supreme Court, Ruth-
30 seconds.
Ruth Ginsburg, she said that women have the right to privacy, that that's a constitutional right. And my children, I'm gonna raise them to, in the body that God gave them, as a boy and a girl, and I don't want them to be confused or to have to affirm the pronouns that are incorrect. I think that's dehumanizing to tell somebody that they're less than how God created them. If God created you a man, God made you a man for His purposes, and to have to use a pronoun that's a lie against the Creator is dehumanizing. And I just don't want to see that happen in our school district. I think we have a duty to lift the spirits of the kids to a greater standard, and that is that we have a spirit, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm turning my timer on to make sure. Hello, good evening, board. Thank you for having me here. My name is Ellen. I go by Ellie Krug. I'm not a district resident. I am a national speaker on human inclusivity and on helping people to understand our differences and how to get past-
I'm trying to order, yes. I thought that we- We're allowing, I mean, we can, we're allowing the rest of the speakers.
Let's let our residents speak first.
Okay, well, they, you didn't-
I want to hear it.
I'm gonna let you just keep going, and then we're gonna go to, because we're gonna, everybody's gonna be heard today.
Okay.
Everybody's gonna end up being heard today, so-
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. You know, there have been many people who have spoken. I'm here, of course, in favor of the policy adoption of 508. And there have been many people here who have spoken more eloquently than what I can. All that I want to say is this, is your, your mission here is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams. That is impossible to do if you cannot be who you are. And all that your policy does, all that it does is allow humans, young humans, to figure things out for themselves. That is what we should all be encouraging young humans in this world to do. I will also say this, the divisions that you hear here in this room are unfortunate. And I want to make sure that the people here opposing the policy know this. And Pastor, I am sorry, that was your history growing up. My heart goes out to you. But I am willing to come and speak to those who are intolerant of this policy, who have fears about transgender LGBTQ people. Please, reach out to me. I will come to your church, I will come to your organization for a respectful conversation and dialogue, to see where we can find our commonalities. Lastly, I trust that all of you have been noticing my voice. This is the product of suppressing your identity. This is what happens when young transgender girls are not allowed to live as their true selves. And trust me, this is something about being other that I am reminded of every day, where I go, with whom I speak. Your policy will allow young humans to find themselves and live their lives as they deserve. Thank you very much.
Tanya Westphal?
I'm following some amazing speakers, by the way. Thanks, everybody, for sharing your viewpoint and opinion. I think that really what this policy is about is respecting one another. I think all of these policies that we passed are about showing respect, and sadly, in our society, that isn't happening. And so I don't disagree with a lot of what's in the policy as it's written. I am concerned that we are passing policies through very quickly. So I'm sorry, my name is Tanya Westphal, back up. I have four kids in the district, one that just graduated from Maple Grove. He actually didn't race his race today and is working my volunteer hours so that I could speak. And I'm really not prepared, I'll be honest. So I, I just, I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for 24 years. I've worked at HCMC for many years in pediatrics and newborn ICU. So I've seen a lot, seen a lot of suicidal kids. I can't pretend to be really fluent in education system. The whole education thing is like an animal. I do not understand, and it kind of bugs me that it's not like a hospital or run like a hospital. And probably the biggest thing that bugs me about it is that, is just this whole policymaking and how quickly you're doing it without any community feedback. And I think that it's great. It is great to get a wide viewpoint of perspectives here, but I do feel like you're circumventing the process. And it may or may not change the outcome, but I do think the wording, as it is, might need some twer, tweaks. Not twerks, it doesn't need twerks. It needs some tweaks. So, you know, I just feel like it's in all fairness to our community, and, I mean, really, there's such a diverse array of perspectives here. They all need to be heard, and maybe you do have some other wording that you want to use. I personally just would like, I just found out about it Monday, I know half the people that I informed about it had never even heard that we were doing it. Is it necessary? It sounds like it is, to some degree. So I'm sorry, right, I'm living in my own little, you know, I've been working tons of overtime at the hospital, as you can only imagine, right? I've been at work. So that's all I'm gonna say. I also just, basically with the policy, I do feel like the language is very broad. So I feel like it's very subjective versus objective, and of course, for us-
30 seconds remaining.
There's measurable outcomes that, and measurable criteria that we would follow, and I don't see any of that there. And, and I know that, you spoke to that a little bit, a lot, you know. So I feel like it's kind of open to interpretation, that I do feel is kind of confusing. So the only other thing is, I would say, is I have been trying to educate myself. I just read the book Irreparable Damage, and before you judge the book by the cover, it is by a journalist who explores a lot of what's happening in society right now. And I would just highly recommend it. And she takes on a lot of perspectives of professionals and psychologists, and just, this is more of a social issue than I think that we are even aware of, and I do, and shame on us as parents and teachers and everybody that isn't more aware. I mean, we need to really look into this more and research it, so that's all I'll say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Halpas?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jennifer Halpas. I do not live in the district. I would consider myself a parent expert. I said I wasn't going to speak because I sent you all an email, but I just had, really quick, that there's been a lot of talk about, the public hasn't had time to make, have input, to make this decision. How about legislators, lawmakers, the Minnesota Court of Appeals, who already decided this? So I waste the taxpayers' time. The fight is with the court, not with school boards trying to comply with state law. I would advise the opposition to look that way, instead of with school boards, because without a policy, segregation via assigned bathrooms and locker rooms is too easily done by administrators, and that will put schools out of compliance with the law. And I am the mom of a transgender student, represented by Kristi Hall, who won that over quarter million dollar settlement. That's a lot of money. And yes, you have insurance, but those claims up your insurance costs, and taxpayers will pay attention to that eventually. So when discrimination lawsuits are settled against gender diverse students, districts are always tasked with creating a gender inclusive policy as part of the settlement. That's all of that. Thank you. I wish you well, and I know it's not fun or an easy position, but it, it does put you in compliance with the law. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Karen Wild, sorry, WILV, thank you.
I worked in Maple Grove for a couple of years, from 2018 to 2019, don't live in the district. I have been a child psychologist for about 40-some years and have recently retired from children's hospitals in Minneapolis, where I have treated several thousand kids over the years. What I'm hearing tonight is deep fear and confusion about what being transgender, gay, lesbian, or bisexual means for people, including for youth, who are exploring their own identities. What I'm hearing is deep confusion about where the dangers really lie. And where the dangers of aggression, bullying, molestation, even rape in extraordinarily rare cases, where those dangers lie is in the bathrooms that exist right now, all over the country. And where the dangers lie is in settings where parents and families and communities fail to acknowledge the shared humanity of all of us, and fail to acknowledge the right of every single one of us to safety and consent and privacy. There are ways to build that in, but excluding transgender kids from using the spaces and thriving in the spaces where their identities call them to exist is not any kind of safe solution for our communities. What we see when people deny and subvert their own identity development is misery, not only for those children, but for us as the communities that love them and need them to thrive.
30 seconds remaining.
We've heard from educators, we've heard from clergy, we've heard from parents, we've heard from people who are afraid, and we've heard from people who are affirming. I wanted also to pay attention to science and fact, because as a psychologist, I am first and foremost a scientist. And what we have seen in the dozens and hundreds of communities that have adopted policies like this policy is that those communities are stronger and better and have children who are thriving with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, to contribute to community, and to engage in a lifetime of learning. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, for being here and for all that, who spoke. We're gonna conclude now, the, did you have a question?
I'm trying to order.
Yes.
Is it true that people that weren't residents were invited to speak?
We have a list of a lot of different people that spoke. So some people identified, and some people didn't identify as residents.
Okay, because one guest that I invited was told because she was a resident, she couldn't speak, and I think that was misinformation. Would you be so kind as to let one more person speak?
I think you have to at this point. I think that we can, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just state your name, please.
Hi, thank you. Luca Joe Graupley, thank you for allowing me to speak. I misunderstood, so I thank you, thank you all for being here. As a former transgender female, well, I was a transgender male, identified for 34 years. I'm now a pastor, and I also minister to the gay community and transgender people who don't want to be in that lifestyle. So as such, I would say a high percentile, 90%, of people who did identify as LGBT or transgender come out of it. The statistics are high. So, sorry, but that's chief-
Okay, everybody, let's, let's finish, because then we have to move on to a business part, portion of the meeting, but remember, we're gonna be respectful.
Thank you. As myself, who was transgender for 34 years, I met the Lord Jesus Christ 12 years ago, and I'm no longer transgender. I don't want to be a boy, and I'm very happy being born a woman who likes more masculine things. So there's a whole big confusion around this thing that needs more discussion, because like myself, I thought, well, if I like these things, it must mean this. And people would put me in this box and say, well, you must be a wannabe a boy. But when we work through these situations with people that are in this and who don't want to identify as gay or don't want to have same-sex attractions, they find, once they understand how things work and how things operate, and that they're normal, as they work through those stages of their life, they find that they don't have those things anymore. And oftentimes, it's related to trauma. Like myself, I had horrible trauma as a child, and I didn't want to be a girl because who would want to after I was damaged, right? So once that trauma is healed with people, and this is with anything, not just transgender or homosexuality, it's with anything in life, eating disorders or anything else. Your body is your body, and the DNA, I can put in blue contact lenses and- I can put in blue contact lenses and color my hair blonde, but I'm still, my DNA still says, I'm this. And there's no denying that. You can put on different body parts and change it, but that doesn't change who the person is. And once the person is healed of the trauma that they've had, then they can go back to be in whole again. So, it's not true, everything that people are saying, look it up. There's other facts. The Constitution is that people have the right to privacy. A girl should be able to go potty in a bathroom without being scared. There's a whole nother group of people that are being discriminated against, and those are the people that don't want to be transgender. So, where's the place for them? Where's the safety for them? That's not okay. That's a horrible place for those little girls to be or that little boy. Who's gonna stand up for them? Well, I will.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And so, I'm gonna say that the blood's gonna be on people's hands, because when you affirm this and you let people run away with their imagination, then the blood's gonna be on their hands, because the percentile of suicide is higher for people that, in that lifestyle than people who weren't. So, y'all are gonna, y'all are gonna have to deal with the Lord on that, because it's gonna be on your hands. So, thank you for talking. Let me talk.
Time. Okay. We are going to move on to the next agenda item. Superintendent McIntyre, you will give your report.
All right. Good evening, Chair Dawson-Wilton, board members, members of our public here tonight. We'll give you, part of the superintendent's report, as we do each month, is to share points of pride in our district. And points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which you've all heard a few times tonight, to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. So, in the area of achieving our dreams, and Kay is down there helping me out this evening, our family and community engagement department offered free summer of wellness activities to children and families in the district. Recent opportunities included a soccer camp, cheer camp, and virtual cooking classes. The class was wrapped up last week, and were a great way to bring our community together and keep learning going through the summer. CCX News stopped by to the soccer fields, as you can see here, to learn more about the program, and you can head to our Facebook page to watch that video. In the area of contributing to community, here's a way you can contribute to our community. The district's Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, often referred to as ACT MAC, is seeking members for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As part of this advisory committee, members analyze information that affects our enrollment, our capacity in building use, and creates observations and recommendations to share with district administration. There's three more days to apply. Applications are due in hand by July twenty-third, and the application can be found on district279.org. Osseo Area Schools is a recipient of the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International, or ASBO, for fiscal year 2020. This award honors school districts that demonstrate high-quality financial reporting and accountability through comprehensive annual financial reporting that shows credibility, confidence, and transparency. The certificate of excellence can have a tangible impact by helping the district receive a better bond rating, which can benefit the school property taxpayers. Osseo Area Schools has received this award every year since fiscal year nineteen ninety. Congratulations and thank you to our excellent business services team who made this achievement Cabinet leaders and school board members had a fantastic time walking in the Maple Grove Days Parade last week. We had a chance to hand out stickers for the district and see many members of our community. It was really well attended. It was a warm night, hot night, but a good weather night and a great parade. So, thanks to all who made the event such a success. We're looking forward to participating in several more parades this fall. Our district's beloved art exchange boxes, created and supplied by Birch Grove Elementary School for the Arts, art teacher Cory Brown, are back better than ever. Visit the boxes outside Birch Grove or Park Brook Elementary Schools to pick up everything you'll need for an afternoon of creative fun. And thanks to, again, to Ms. Brown, who has donated all the materials to make this possible for the second summer in a row. I just have a couple additional items to share in my report this evening. Just wanted to acknowledge once again the variety of summer school programming happening this summer. We're offering more summer programming than we ever had before, and everything from Camp Rocks to, in our community education department, to the classes identified earlier, those free camps and classes through our family and community engagement department's summer of wellness. So, everything's going very well. Some programs are now picking up here in July and moving into August. Then lastly, as an exciting new school year is almost upon us, I hate to say it, but it isn't that far away, we are preparing for hopefully a more typical school year this fall. And our school district is already preparing our back-to-school efforts by taking a really close look at our COVID-19 health and safety protocols. The upcoming year will look different than last year, as we remember the pandemic being so much of an impact last year, and will be much closer to a more normal experience this year. As many of you know, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention released some guidance recently, and the guidance really does emphasize the importance of in-person learning. And we really learned that ourselves, how critical that is. It does highlight some health and safety measures to consider as we head into next school year, and really maintaining in-person learning while protecting the health and safety of our students, staff, and community is our top priority. In a recent update to superintendents, the Minnesota Department of Education shared that any health-related guidance would come from the Minnesota Department of Health. They stressed that the MDH guidance will really contain recommendations for school districts, not requirements. So, both MDE and MDH continue to urge all eligible Minnesotans to get vaccinated now so that they can be ready for school and that can help limit the spread of COVID-19 in our schools and in our communities. Tomorrow, families will receive our district's tentative plans for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Some details on learning models, vaccinations, confirmed cases, and overall logistics will be included. But really, the highlights are, we intend to be back five days a week in school. Masks likely will be recommended, but not required. Vaccinations will not be required. And lastly, families preferring to be online or have an online experience are asked to register for the district's new online learning program called Two Seven Nine Online, available to students kindergarten through twelfth grade. I'll just make a note that this information at this point is what we know today. We've learned many times, it can and could change, but right now, we believe that will be what the start of the year will generally look like. And we know families are anxious. We're pushing for additional enrollment. Encourage our families to enroll as well in our district. So, that is the update, Chair Dawson-Wilton, for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is school board committee reports. Director Grady, do you have a committee report or update?
No reports at this time, thank you.
Okay. Director Brooks?
No reports today.
Director Missata-John?
I just have the Two Eighty-seven District Report, and I was just looking up the exact name of this tool that we're using. So, at our board meetings, we are now using the Racial Equity Impact Analysis Tool when we're making our decisions. So, that's been something we've been practicing with as a board, and we are continuing our process of the superintendent search. That's it.
Thank you. Director Simon, do you have a committee report?
No official committee reports. However, we did have Gretchen Peel, who's a longtime leader in our district, present to the Brooklyn Park Rotary. So, I want to emphasize that we have the upcoming Five K. Reading is Fun, a huge opportunity to support the foundation and our schools, and we'll continue to share more about the foundation in different forums so that we can get broad support across the community.
Thank you. Director Douglas, do you have any?
No reports today, thank you.
At this time, I'll show, I do have two reports. The first report is just the Association Metropolitan School Districts are going, we're doing a strategic planning process, so that's really exciting. So, it's a consortium of different districts across our state to really look at policy and, you know, lobbying and efforts at the legislature on behalf of our school districts, so we can all meet our missions and serve our students and school community. I also shared a brief report on the July thirteenth closed work session on the superintendent's evaluation. The school board completed the annual evaluation of Superintendent McIntyre for the twenty-twenty twenty-one school year. All six board members were fully participated in the evaluation, and the evaluation focused on the completion of the five goals negotiated between Superintendent McIntyre and the board. School board determined Superintendent McIntyre's performance to be effective, while effective and highly effective in every evaluation goal area, his strengths existed around navigating multiple levels of government to effectively implement the wide-ranging COVID-19 policies, procedures, and guidance in alignment with the state's Safe Learning Plan requirements, providing leadership on, excuse me, school district operations, planning for future program and facility needs. This year, provided some unique opportunities that have continued strong district processes and comprehensive long-term facilities planning and prioritization. And also, being able to continue to engage our school community stakeholders throughout the entire district. We know we have diverse stakeholder groups through the pandemic-related restriction to advance the mission values and future strategic direction for our district. So, we'll be working with Superintendent McIntyre this summer to develop goals for the upcoming year, and this review really provides the backdrop for those goals. So, thank you. The next agenda item is the Consent Agenda. Board members, are there any items you would like to remove for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as printed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Director Missata-John, seconded by Director Simon, to approve the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, any? Motion passes six to zero. Our first action item is the second reading of Policy Five Oh Eight Gender Inclusion. Information will be shared by Tim Palmetiere, General Counsel.
At least four weeks have passed since the first reading of this proposed policy, and under school board policy, if approved by the board this evening, the proposed policy will be formally adopted. Policy Five Oh Eight, this is a new draft policy that is being proposed to support gender nonconforming students in the schools. Recent decisions of the Minnesota Court of Appeals and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights indicate that both the Minnesota Human Rights Act and the Minnesota Constitution provide legal protections for gender nonconforming students. In addition, several federal district courts of appeal have held in the past five years that Title IX prohibits discrimination against gender identity in terms of students accessing public school programs, activities, and facilities. The proposed policy is modeled after recently adopted policies in a number of other school districts in the state of Minnesota. The policy would specifically require that school officials in consultation with students and their parents or guardians make efforts to respect all sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, and gender nonconformity, identify and address students by their preferred names or pronouns, change student names and preferred pronouns in school district digital systems to the extent possible upon written request of the student and/or their parents, prohibit the separation of students and/or curricular materials based upon gender unless it serves a legitimate pedagogical tool, prohibit all students, provide, I'm sorry, all students the opportunity to participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities in a manner consistent with their gender identity in conformance with the Minnesota State High School League rules and regulations, provide all students with access to facilities that align with the student's gender identity, respect the safety and privacy of all students pursuant to Policy Five Fifteen, which pertains to the protection and privacy of people records, ensure that district policies apply to all students regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, or gender nonconformity, and work with families and students to identify one or more safe staff members who can support gender nonconforming students in the schools. Since presenting the proposed policy for first reading last month, the school district has received a significant amount of public feedback on the policy. Through emails to the board and superintendent and through submissions to We Listen, as of this morning, we had received approximately seventy responses in support of the adoption of the policy as written or with some minor modification, and twenty responses opposing adoption of the policy. Persons supporting the policy commented on the need to ensure that our schools are safe and inclusive and supportive for gender nonconforming students. Several viewed the policy as being important and showing support for all gender nonconforming students in our schools. Several commented on the personal importance that the proposed policy had relative to themselves and their children. Others remarked on the importance of the policy in supporting mental health of students. Persons opposing the proposed policy commented that gender identity and use of pronouns should not be expressly adjusted in school board policy, or that the proposed policy is not needed since there are other provisions in board policy protecting students regardless of their gender. Others expressed concern about their children's use of facilities that are not separated based on biological sex. Some commentators raised concerns about competitive advantages that certain students could realize under the policy in terms of extracurricular activities, and still others raised questions about the origin and application of definitions set forth in the policy. After receiving and reviewing the comment from the public, it was a recommendation of the majority of the policy committee that proposed Policy Five Oh Eight as proposed in the first reading last month before the board be put on as written and as set forth on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Policy Five Oh Eight Gender Inclusion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Director Grady, seconded by Director Brooks. Okay. Is there any discussion? I don't know where I should start. Do you want to?
Right away.
Director Douglas?
I'm sorry, did you say you wanted to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. First, I want to begin by saying that I fully support equal access and opportunity for all students and staff, including gender nonconforming students, for which this policy was created, as noted by General Counsel Tim Palmetiere at our last board meeting when this policy was first introduced. Many will assume that my vote is a lack of support or outright opposition to members of the LGBTQ plus community, and that is simply not true. I have heard from several staff members and some community members that, quote, "Many of our LGBTQ plus students do not feel safe or supported in our schools," end quote. This is very concerning and contradicts what our incident records, student surveys, and other reporting mechanisms have found. Additionally, in my own experience with families of gender nonconforming students, as well as direct interactions with those students, I have found this statement to be categorically false. In fact, students overwhelmingly report feeling well-supported and safe at school, however, not so much in other communities such as their own homes. And that is a problem. As you may recall, in our last board meeting, there was a presentation that included information about, I'm sorry, I skipped. Students, there seems to be a misconception that gender nonconforming students are not allowed to use gender-neutral facilities, which is sometimes false. I know that there have been instances where this has occurred. However, as you may recall, in our last board meeting, there was a presentation that included information about updating and adding in single-use facilities, which was approved by the board. I have also received questions about pronoun use. There seems to be a belief that pronouns are not respected, when in fact, they typically are. Right now, each student's unique needs are handled on a case-by-case basis, with their unique needs being addressed in a manner consistent with those needs. I requested data on incidents involving students who reported bullying, harassment, or discrimination based on their participation in the LGBTQ plus community. It took over three weeks for the school district to provide me with this information. Based on that information, according to our superintendent Cory McIntyre, in the last three years, there have been eight to twelve claims total in all secondary-level schools, that's middle schools and high schools, eight to twelve only. And they called these claims of students reporting incidences of anything related to and/or made by or on behalf of students in regard to any gender, sex, or LGBTQIA+ related concerns at the secondary level. None were reported at the elementary level. He also noted that there was a review of our communication log for the last five years of work at the district, with their district-level principal, and there have been no reports during that timeframe, none in the last five years. I am profoundly concerned about the massive discrepancy in what staff indicates as a significant problem that's prolific in our school system and the lack of evidence to support that. To me, it feels like we have a under-reporting problem if this is an issue that's facing our community that we're not aware of. This is concerning on very many levels, because it allows those who violate the existing policies to walk away without consequence. It leaves victims with no recourse and no justice. It leaves victims with no recourse and no justice, and it leaves administration with a lot of misinformation about what's occurring in our schools, among other concerns. As a district, we have existing board policies 102, which has not been updated in over two decades, which is a school-wide policy which should be updated to reflect changes in case law that specifically impact this student group. We also have policy 413 and 514, which all address concerns for gender nonconforming students as well as other students. This policy 102 should be updated and eliminate the politically motivated proposed policy 508. In addition, other governing bodies have already created standards for protecting these individuals, such as Title IX, the Minnesota Human Rights Act, Safe and Supportive Minnesota Schools Act, Religious, Sexual, and Racial Harassment and Violence Policy, and the Educational Opportunity, Equal Educational Opportunities, and precedent set by the Minnesota State High School League. Clearly, the notion that gender nonconforming students have no course of action to remedy these concerns is false. The policy that was proposed today and at the last board meeting, policy 508, does not have a procedure for addressing the violations within this policy. In fact, they use existing procedure 413. Again, the lack of transparency here is evident. Creating a new policy without rigorous input from the affected stakeholder groups is reckless and irresponsible. The LGBTQ community has not had the opportunity to provide specific feedback or input on this policy, and their voices are not represented here. Typically, when we introduce new policy, we invite community members who will be affected by it to have listening sessions and provide feedback. That did not happen here. According to our school board policy 208, the school board will in earnest desire to seek out the judgment and counsel of its citizens, students, and staff members in the development of all new policies before final adoption. That, again, did not occur here. While in the preliminary development phase of the policy creation, Board Member Thomas Brooks has publicly decreed that his intent was to implement this policy in time for Pride Month without seeking public input or due process. Typically, when revising, repealing, or adopting policies, the policy committee will bring forward policies to the full board for a first reading. After the first reading, the board will take a minimum of four weeks to receive and reveal stakeholder feedback. During that four-week period, the policy committee will typically meet to make desired and necessary changes to the policy before bringing the policy back to the full board for a final reading. Typically, if there is no policy committee meeting scheduled prior to the next full board meeting, the policy will be read at the next full board meeting following a policy committee meeting. I am also concerned about placing definitions into this policy, which is inconsistent with current board policies. Definitions belong in procedure, not policy. These definitions create significant legal ramifications and dangerously affect the mental health and well-being of our student body should they be used to impart knowledge into small children not developmentally capable of fully understanding the meaning behind them. Bringing this policy forward for a second reading and vote without transparency or due diligence is setting a dangerous precedent. The leadership of this board is failing our student body and our stakeholders by not upholding these standards. Ask yourself this: If this board sets precedent this way to push a policy forward that you agree with, what will stop them from doing it on a policy you do not agree with? I will not support any new policy that does not allow for transparency and community engagement and thoughtful consideration of feedback provided by its stakeholders. The proposed policy does not reflect our mission or the values of this community and the stakeholders; it's inconsistent with our district policies. Thank you.
Director Simons?
Thank you. Having sat on the policy committee, I previously mentioned the timeline and expectations throughout that and the changing nature of those. When we look at a policy, I think really what must be emphasized is good intention does not mean good policy. We really need to be thoughtful about the decision criteria we apply when we look at creating an entirely new policy that will affect every single member in our district. I think the first criteria is, does it meet our legal obligations and requirements? And clearly, that was the origination of why this policy came forward, which was intended to be originally proposed as revisions to existing policies to ensure that case law was incorporated. Unfortunately, there was a press by policy committee members to do something different than that and to introduce an entirely new policy, which is beyond the legal obligations and requirements and introduces language that is quite broad, vague, and confusing. It calls for training. It calls for procedures to identify in a proactive manner based on the language as written, the pronouns, the gender of students. And so, it's difficult to consider adopting a policy when we have not seen what that even means. We have seen no guidance on what that training would be. We have not had procedures put in front of us. So, that does not feel consistent, transparent, or clear. We really have to ask, is the policy within the scope and the mission of an academic institution? The role of the school is not to be involved in the gender identity of students. Our role is to protect gender expression, to protect all students, and to ensure a respectful and constructive academic environment. So creating definitions that are broad, vague, not specific in their application really is not appropriate for a school district or a school board to do. Does the language execute the intent? I've raised several questions previously and publicly about this broad, vague, unclear language, the definition and origination of those definitions, what it means to identify a student's gender, is that proactive or is that reactive? What happens to teachers that do not utilize those pronouns with the penalties falling under the harassment policy? The lack of differentiation between staff and students, really in the language in this policy, because it does apply to everybody? The lack of clarity as to whether student-led groups fall under this policy versus district-sponsored, district-led groups? And the creation of an adult-student relationship that applies to no other student group? When I raised questions about this and sought clarification, the response was, "We intend the policy to be." We expect the policy to be. It is unfortunate that the policy language is not clear enough to be explicit about how this would be implemented, which creates a very big problem for me as a school board member, that if we're reliant on somebody's intention of how it would be used, that doesn't feel like a level of appropriate standard to be applied consistently across the district. Unfortunately, as evidenced tonight, the positioning of this policy, even by board members, has become very divisive. It's really been positioned as that you either support LGBT+ community members or you don't. So really, anybody who disagrees with any particular elements, the language, whether this is good policy, whether the language is clear and appropriate, has been cast in the light of having hate and bigotry in their hearts. And that's really a dangerous place to have this district move to, and this is not the first time, as we've begun to see. I will not stand for that. I will not stand for people to be labeled as bigots or against members of our own community simply for asking for more discussion or for clarity. This is a very dangerous move of the board of how we communicate, how we discuss, and it must stop. It really must stop. Again, this is about, is this the right policy to achieve the intent? Is it clear? Is it appropriate? And I've continued to raise these questions. I don't think that this policy as written meets the intention. Again, I think it's vague and problematic. And again, how we establish the policy does make a difference, as Director Douglas laid out and I laid out earlier. Those are my comments.
Director Mesquita Jones?
I have two points of clarification based on my colleagues' comments. I was previously on the policy committee, and we have had new policy adoption without rigorous community input as currently defined. We have a new cellphone policy that was adopted since I've been here that had school input, student input, teacher input, administrative input, and I have been gathering input about an inclusion policy since I started in November 2018 from students, from teachers, from administrators, from GSAs, and that information has gone through the superintendent's office and the council's office for those couple of years. So I just want to put a point of clarification that the procedure is followed the same as it did with the cellphone policy. Not to mention that it was gathered through the ECAP process and a few other processes. I wrote down what I wanted to say because this is an extremely important issue for many of our students. As someone who has a background in child education and child therapy and child well-being, we have been talking as a board about the importance of mental health for our scholars. We have increased our investment in mental health services as a result while recognizing that more is needed. LGBTQIA2S, and I will explain that, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, intersex, asexual, and two-spirited to include our indigenous community members, youth are more likely to be homeless, more likely to be suicidal, and are more likely to have mental health issues due to, and the research is clear, unsupportive environments. Unfortunately, and often unintentionally, our schools are often unsupportive environments for our students who identify as LGBTQIA2S and other historically marginalized groups. The research is clear on these facts and how schools can help mitigate these. When we attend to scholar needs, we can witness and encourage their brilliance. An inclusive, supporting, welcoming school climate is a leading factor for student success. An inclusive, supportive, welcoming school climate is a leading factor for student success. We also know that there are specific practices that support our gender nonconforming students in order for them to feel safe and welcomed. There are state-developed toolkits for this. There have been many gender policy developed that include this. It is science. The policy is merely one piece, only one piece, to improving school climate for each and every student, and the policy was written to reflect the practices that support our students. I hope that by adopting this policy that we will honor our mission that has been stated several times tonight of making sure that every single scholar feels that our own community inspires them, prepares all our students to achieve their dreams, to contribute to community because they do not have to worry about their mental health, and engage in a lifetime of learning.
So first, I just want to say thank you to everyone that came out today and rallied or came as folk or just came to listen from both sides. Second, I want to thank Director Douglas for the shout-out in promoting my Facebook page. I am on Facebook, ThomasBrooks4279, and I, like most of the school board, did use social media as a tool to promote this policy and to hopefully get some community input, which we've gotten over the last month-plus. For the comment that was posted on social media, it has not been edited. It's still up. You can go check it out. Starting back at the beginning of the year, I did absolutely hope that we could have this policy pass by Pride Month, as Pride Month is important to me. With so many of the comments, group emails, and individual messages received over the last couple of months, it's clear to me that many have missed the memo between fall of last year and today. For those that don't know, I am a proud, openly gay man serving on this school board. I've had my faith, mental health, value, and dignity all indirectly questioned by way of harshly judging our LGBTQ+ students and families with names and inferences I can't repeat in this room today with kids around. To say this gender inclusion policy has been a long time coming is an understatement. One of the first things I was eager to do when I was elected in November was to meet many of our LGBTQ+ students, to simply let them know I'm here. It was then that I told them this policy would happen, and I am proud we are now at the point of having a policy in front of us to hopefully consider as a board today. We always say representation matters, and while I am a cisgender gay man serving on this school board, I can still relate and understand some of the struggles our transgender students face in consistently feeling safe, supported, and welcomed. The beauty about finally having representation in positions of influence or power is that issues, policies, or systemic changes that once seemed close to impossible all of a sudden become personal. It is my personal mission to see every student safe, supported, and treated with the same high level of respect, regardless of which school building they walk into across our district. Before I go any further, I actually want to applaud our school staff, many of which have made do even without this policy in working with transgender and nonconforming students and families to create welcoming, safe, and supportive school environments. As mentioned by my colleagues in the last meeting, we do already have bullying and harassment policies in place that protect all students in many of these situations. But this policy goes beyond bullying and harassment and focuses on creating a framework for district staff to use to provide consistent support to these students, including use of pronouns and our name changes as appropriate. This policy almost seems late, given that other districts in our state of larger size or even smaller already have gender inclusion policies of some form in place. We have seen multiple stories now of the Supreme Court ruling in favor of transgender students being able to use the bathroom that aligns with their gender identity, or others here in the state of Minnesota with similar rulings that have come at a cost to other school districts for discrimination. The narrative by a couple of my colleagues is that this policy is unnecessary because it is exclusive and already covered under harassment and bullying policies. There's nothing exclusive about this policy. It does not separate certain kids from others, does not take away from others. It simply provides a framework to support students that have unique needs and challenges in encountering our school system, culture, and environments. My colleagues also argue this policy requires students to hold certain beliefs that may infringe upon their religious freedoms. Nowhere in the policy does it say this, but it does say that every one of our students deserves to feel valued. At the end of the day, that is what this is about. That is what attaining an education is about, creating value, dignity, and a solid foundation to critically think about the world, one's own life, and how one can best contribute to supporting and improving this complex world we live in. This policy is just one part of our system that dictates the value and well-being of our students. The truth is, even if we pass this policy today, it's already been said, more work still needs to be done. Policies like this will be needed as long as there are people in our communities and our society that think it's appropriate to force distorted, exclusive, or oppressive religious beliefs on others. These policies will be necessary as long as there are people that find it okay to dictate to others where and how they use the bathroom. And these policies will be necessary as long as we have members of our communities in fear of those that don't look, think, or live in the same way they do. I also want to address something that has come up in the public comments from the last meeting, the media, and then again this evening. To our public commenters, now twice and broader friend, they came up and rambled asinine comments about our transgender students, their mental health, personal decisions about their identities, and the need to convert or prey the identity away. Your organization and everything you stand for is wrong. Anyone that stoops low enough to prey on, P-R-E-Y, or manipulate our kids, any of them, particularly those in the LGBTQ+ spectrum, are using religion as a weapon which can have long-lasting harmful effects on their mental health that can and will also impact their education. Everyone has a right to feel valued, live with dignity, without fear of harassment, bullying, or manipulation. At some point, some of us lost sight of that word, "everyone." We've started drawing lines at who is worth our attention and who is not, who matters and who doesn't, who fits into the majority with the rest and the minority. On one hand, some of us make statements about how we love everyone and want to see everyone safe, but then followed up with a statement like, "I don't want my children subjected to social justice education." We forget all too quickly, there is no social justice without education, and ironically, for many of us, there would be no education without social justice. Women in the Black community, I'm looking at you, because at one point, you too, your parents, grandparents, or great-grandparents were not worth someone's attention. parents, grandparents, or great-grandparents were not worth someone's attention, time, or, God forbid, taxpayer dollars. I plan to stand on the right side of history and stand up for those some consider to be in the minority. I proudly support this gender inclusion policy. Thank you.
I am a proud parent of LGBTQ and gender nonconforming children. When my children came out as LGBTQ, my husband and I celebrated their self-awareness and continued to give them our unconditional love, because that's what parenting means to me, supporting and loving my children. But I have to admit, when our child came out as transgender, I was really afraid about his safety. I was worried about harassment, bullying, and not feeling safe and welcome in school. I was scared because I was afraid that our community wouldn't support my family. The truth is that the evidence for supporting vulnerable children is overwhelming. Gender affirmation is the standard of care supported by the medical community, including the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American Psychological Association, because experts know that forcing transgender people to fit within the sex assigned at birth causes substantial psychological pain and is considered medically unethical. Even the majority of school organizations support transgender students using the restrooms and locker rooms that match their gender identity, including the National Associations of School Principals, Psychologists, Counselors, and Social Workers. I have now been advocating publicly for a gender inclusion policy for over three years, and I want to thank each and every one of our community members for reaching out to the district to support gender nonconforming scholars with this policy. We have heard from students, parents, teachers, staff, and community members, and I am so proud to be a part of a community that knows that we all share a moral responsibility to protect and value all vulnerable children, because each child deserves our unconditional love, because each and every student deserves a safe and welcoming learning environment, because no vulnerable student should be denied their human rights, because this is how we show who we are as a community. Thank you.
I'm a little out of lust for words tonight because my heart's desire as the board chair has been to bring our community together. We've been through a lot these last couple of years in so many ways, and, you know, it's not about us as adults. It is not about us. It is not about us. It is about our young people. It's about my little boy right there. I want him, and I want each and every one of our young people to see themselves, who they are, and see that reflected in our schools, with their teachers and educators, and that's important, and I absolutely understand the process. I get that. I get the engagement. I'm all about engagement. But when I have talked to my colleagues, when I've talked to community members, and I've read what's been in, when I've talked to our general counsel, our superintendent, resoundingly, what I'm hearing is, we have followed the process. This is just the beginning of engagement. This is not the end of engagement. We have a lot to do, as many stated, it's broad, right? It can go many different ways, and that's what we are, and that's what we need to figure out as a community together, all different perspectives. And I just, I can't stand for the rhetoric, and I won't stand for it. It's about humanity, and it's about heart, and bottom line, it's about academic excellence. We need to get to a place where our district is the premier school district in this state. We need to focus on ensuring, and we do that by ensuring all of our students, each and every one of our students, are safe, and getting back to our curriculum, getting back to all of our planning and moving forward, moving this train forward, because we are a big district to steer. But we need to ensure that we're centering around our students, we're looking at, we can, I'm very open to looking at our policy committee to say, hey, maybe we really need to outline what that engagement process looks like. And, you know, I just, I do, I do support this policy. I've met with each of our colleagues. It's weight-heavy on my heart, which is, to be transparent, why my husband and son came tonight just to be supportive, because it's been, I've been hearing so many, ad nauseam, so many perspectives around this policy. But at the end of the day, it goes back to our core values, and the one that sticks out to me is that everyone has equal intrinsic value. That's what sticks out. And so, as we vote tonight on this policy, and we've heard from all of our colleagues on this board, I just want to just say that we want each and every one of our students to be accepted and to feel so good when they walk through our doors and to be supported. And so, with that, we're going to take a vote on the policy 508. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four-two. So, now, next agenda action item, and thank you all for coming tonight as well. Our next action item is the 10-year Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan. Ron Mayer, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and Dale Carlstrom, Director of Facilities and Transportation Operations, will share information tonight.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Dawson Walton, Superintendent McIntyre, and school board members. As stated in your school board materials, administration recommends approval of the 10-year Long-Term Facility Maintenance, or LTFM, plan. At the June 22 school board meeting, we discussed the three elements that the Department of Education requires each school district to submit by July 31 of each year, including the 10-year LTFM revenue projection, the 10-year LTFM expenditure worksheet, and the LTFM Statement of Assurance signed by the superintendent. As a reminder, LTFM funding is provided exclusively for deferred maintenance and health and safety-related items and may not be used for other projects. As in previous years, our LTFM projects have been reprioritized based on the greatest needs in the district, as well as considering other important work that is happening in our district, in particular, our Building a Better Future process. Additionally, we have worked closely with our financial advisors, Eller's Public Finance Advisors, to ensure that the revenue and expenditure plan keeps the tax rate stable throughout the 10-year plan through a combination of what's called pay-as-you-go levy, as well as the sale of bonds, which, as you recall, we sold last fall for a two-year period. School board approval tonight will ensure that LTFM revenue is included in our PAY 2022 preliminary levy that will come to the board in September. The next step in our process will be to submit these items to the Department of Education tomorrow, but by July 31, and then we, administration will be back in front of the board in November to review the current LTFM projects for the summer that we're completing right now in the summer of 2021, as well as to present the major projects in the summer of 2022. And with that, administration recommends approval of the LTFM plan.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 10-year Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Director Douglas, seconded by Director Mesquita Jones. Any discussion anybody has?
It was so thoroughly given to us last month that I think we're... I'll speak for myself. Thank you so much.
I actually do have a question more than a comment, but given our audience members that are still here, could you just please touch on the recommendations revolving single-use facilities that were made at our last meeting?
Yes. So, as we go in and as we do deferred maintenance, renovation of our spaces with finishes and things like that, one of the things that we are looking at is creating spaces that are single-use stalls and, you know, certainly as other schools, districts have done as well, as they've renovated spaces, to create those spaces for our students to have bathrooms as well as locker room spaces that are private.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you for all of the thoroughness in prior meetings. It may seem odd to those that are here that we're just passing this, but we've had a lot of discussion leading up to this point, and it's very thorough. I really appreciate how we think about the needs across the district and really aim to ensure that we're meeting all of the needs, right place, right time, right investment levels, continue to balance that forward-thinking-ness of what we need to invest in today so that we don't run into a situation later on. So, I love all of the work done to really study and have a good awareness and a good process for coming, the preventative side of it. I really think we have an exceptional process, again, evidenced by our award recognition tonight. And Ron, is this your last meeting?
It is, yes.
So, I would like to specifically thank you for your leadership in finance, and I know that you have an amazing team. I know that they were amazing when you came into your position, and you're leaving them even more amazing, and I know that the legacy and the impact that you've had with your decision-making and with your staffing during the time you were here is just continuing to put us in a great position moving forward. Thank you for all of your time and your commitment and your contributions to our district.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Ditto.
It's Superintendent McIntyre, you were going to say something?
Well, you stole my thunder.
Sorry. I didn't want him to go before we...
Yeah, I was trying to, Ron didn't know I was going to say something. I'll be brief, but I did want to acknowledge it's Ron, last board meeting here, and we wish you well in Eastern Carver County Schools. It's where your family lives, your kids attend there, you have lots of heart connections there, so it's sad for us to see you go, but as the board knows, Ron's been instrumental in a very short period of time with many really large pieces of work, and I won't catch all of them, but the Dome at Park Center, right as he came on board, right? That was a really big collaborative effort with our city. And just various additions, continued financial expertise through really challenging times, and not to mention just put together our district COVID team and followed all the requirements that came to us with contact tracing and quarantining and all those things. That was Ron's watch. The levy discussions we've had over the years that are always challenging, right? But really walked us through that process, and then his leadership on ECMAC, and there's so many other things that I could go on and on and try to make him blush, I don't think I will. But just know, Ron, we really appreciate your knowledge, your expertise, but maybe more so your openness, your collaborative style, and your willingness to listen, and that really is how the work gets done. So, best of luck to you, but you're not that far away, so we're going to still see you. So, I know the board's got a vote on this, but I thought I'd jump on the opportunity to just acknowledge Ron tonight.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. So, tune in to Eastern Carver School Board meetings. See Ron.
That's right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes six-zero. Our final action item is Gifts to the District. Is there a motion to approve Gifts to the District, $6,849.34?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Director Grady, or Thomas Brooks? Doesn't matter. Director Grady, seconded by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes six-zero. Our last agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Director Douglas, seconded by Director Grady. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes six-zero. Meeting is adjourned at 7:45 PM.